...in America, in the public for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming to this special meeting on November 20th at 6:00 PM regarding a resolution for the bid for the water treatment plant operation building roof project 8653. So, the motion to open the meeting.
Show the motion.
And second?
Second.
Okay. There's comments from the board? Are we ready?
I've shared my concerns with this board from what's deeply concerned with the company on the agenda to do the repair and replacement of our roof.
Hey Jim, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
Good. Can you guys hear that?
Yes.
Yeah, I have you on speakerphone in our meeting room and I have a microphone next to it, so it's picking up in the audience. So, just wanted to have you aboard. We just opened the meeting, did the resolution for a second, and Donna's giving comments.
I'll start again since Jimmy was just dialed in. Jimmy, as you know, I have expressed my concerns with this company for quite a while now. I'm in complete opposition to them completing this project. I've shared my concerns with the board. The scope since Monday, the concealed bid came in changed four times. At this point, I would like to make the recommendation, and I know architectural renderings were originally submitted, but because the project had changed so many times, the scope has changed, materials have changed, and now there are structural changes to that building, I feel like the architectural renderings need to be updated, and this needs to go back out for a bid. We securely tarp the roof, put this out in the proper fashion, and let bids come in so that when there are bids being made, it's not just a bid on what contractor things needs to be done, it's the scope that actually needs to be done. So, when a bid comes in, we're comparing side by side apples to apples, and not what one company thinks we need versus one another. That the architect or a structural engineer revise that plan, making the decisions on what needs to be done, and that go back out for bid. I'm not comfortable with this, just for the record.
All right. Donna, I understand your concerns. However, what we did back last spring was we brought an engineer in. There was a design done that had a pitched roof on it. Bids came in, they were around $200,000, a little over $200,000. Village Board thought that was too much money, and obviously that was the board's decision. And then the board went out and solicited bids from different people for a flat roof without any type of bid specs. So, now we're at a point where we have essentially an open roof. We have a free cast deck up there. We're coming into winter, so to go out and bid right now and leave that up there right now, I believe they put triple tarps up there.
Yes.
To make it as waterproof as they can, but we don't have time to go back out and bid. In my opinion, now we're getting rain tomorrow, lots of snow on Friday, you know, to go out and bid, do the advertisements, do a redesign if that's what you want to do, you're risking, you know, all the equipment that's down there, which is a control center over the old side of the plant, the original side of the plant, to be exposed to the weather. If we were to have gone with the original proposal that was designed with all these contingencies designed in there, we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in today. And I understand the village is in a budget situation, and I appreciate that. But, you know, the board decided what they wanted to do, and that's what we did. And then once we opened up, if we were to have a contract with the original contractor who had the bid, and I understand it was a lot higher, you know, we would have gotten this thing done in overwood with a slope roof on it and not going back to the original flat roof. You take a look at all the buildings that were done, these types of plans, they all have slope roofs on them. And that was the recommendation that we had come back with. So, now you're stuck. If you choose ABC or Precision, that's up to you. We got warranty on both of the roofs, ABC was a little bit lower. I did the background check on ABC, the recommendation came back, you know, very good, people they've worked with for 25 years. It's up to you if you want to go Precision or ABC, I will defer that to the board. But, a decision needs to be made. I would suggest tonight of getting this thing done because the roofing material has weather conditions on it in terms of temperature when it can get put down, and we're getting into that weather season. Obviously, it's been very mild, but we have no, yeah, we're potentially in December.
Couple of comments to that. That roof can be tarp'd for up to a couple of months if it's tarp'd correctly, number one. Number two, the bid that originally came in was not over 200. There was a $118,000 bid that came in. The 200-plus bid was an option. Number three, the second round here that we're dealing with right now between the two bids, ABC was not lower, they were higher. And it did not include many things that the other bid did include, and it certainly did not meet some of the requirements that are critical, and I'll leave it at that. You know my background also, I'm not just speaking...
No, I totally understand. Again, I am going to leave this up. My recommendation would be to go ABC, to the contractor on site, to get this project done, and if you want to go in a different direction, I am fine with that. I don't have, you have anything in this game, I just want the project done, I want the roof secured, and, you know, be done with it.
Jimmy, you're okay with the materials being used?
I'm okay with that.
Are you okay with the warranty situation that we just experienced?
Yeah, I am okay with all of it. I've, you know, Donna, as you know, I've been with the village for the majority of 30 years. I'm not going to give you bad advice.
And I think, maybe just from my point of view, the big difference as we discussed on Monday was the issue of the power pit and the block and the things that are ready to, that are loose and potentially could fall off. It is not in Precision's estimate. And all they, when we asked that question, first when Mark was here that Monday evening, it wasn't, the question wasn't even answered, and then in a separate email, they just talk about their recommended way of doing it is to put the two by sixes, two by eights on top, secure them, bolt them to the power pit, and be done. But, the area outside the power pit is, is in need of repair. We have blocks that are in need of repair. They are not addressing that, and nor, it doesn't sound like they want to address that. And ABC is going to address that for a price that is a few thousand dollars more than the bid from Precision. That's the main focus here. I feel like you're, you're going to put a Band-Aid on a gash, and we're kind of closing our eyes to what you're actually seeing when you look at the building. And it's been that way for years, and it's, and now with the roof continually, obviously, it'll leak because it's been leaking for years, it just didn't happen, then, you know, we're at that point, and it, you know, trying to get contractors and trying to do those things, this timeline has been immense. But now, once you peel that onion off and you saw exactly what you saw, that's why we brought these guys back in for, call it a second opinion, a final quote for the entire work, and submitted. And they came in damn close, but the difference is, put up a new house and this is totally off the chart, but don't put the gutters on the house, one guy is, one guy isn't. Why ain't you putting gutters on the roof? I know you don't agree with this, Donna, I, and I agree that this project needs to move forward only because of the time of year and what you have, and I'm not going to chance personally for me, and I don't know how you would want to take that chance of saying a tarp is going to last for several months and have hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment in those buildings, that could be damaged. If that happens, what's your alternative then?
I didn't, I didn't say several months, I said up to a couple of months, but...
Several months, a couple of months, okay.
The contentious part here is we keep talking about a parapet wall, we don't have a parapet wall.
Whatever you want to call it, it's the bricks, the blocks that are damaged that need to be replaced.
But I'm bringing it up because they're referring to a parapet wall, then we're going to do a repair of a parapet wall, then all of a sudden, I find we don't have a parapet wall, then it come back that they're going to, that they're going to first build a parapet wall.
Go ahead, Jim.
A parapet wall, basically anything above the actual ceiling of the building, the ceiling of the operations building. So, right now, I believe it's one block up, they're going to go two blocks up, put scuppers out. So, that wall, it seems it's structural, all it basically is, they're just blocks, it's not wholly anything structural up there. Basically, they give it some drainage, so put the scuppers out to the side, and allow the drainage off the roof.
And the scuppers is an issue as well? And why build a parapet wall when we do not need a parapet wall, but I don't...
It's repairing what we have, Donna. If you go around the building, there's holes.
I've seen it.
And so, how can you just walk away from that?
That's a repair, that's not building a parapet wall.
But you're going to put your coping and your flashing over it, and the bricks are loose.
Here's the first...
You can see they've been repaired, how many, I don't even know how many times.
Jimmy...
It just doesn't make any sense.
The other roofing company reached out to you and you wouldn't speak with them, and that's concerning to me. I'm not going to keep getting into nitpicking.
I don't think Precision called, or, ABC called me today, Precision called me.
Yes, they did, and left a lengthy voicemail message.
Well, my voice, I get a lot of calls every day, and my voicemail simply said if I don't answer the call, send me a text message. So, it was an unknown number, and I was in meeting, I did a few...
Several emails went out, several emails went out since Monday, when ABC's revisions kept coming back. You put in a sealed bid, it's a sealed bid. Four more came in with changes to it.
Well, because...
Who incidentally, why? After looking at it, at another...
Because there were comments from you. You made the comments of saying there's a difference.
Right.
So, we just contacted the vendor or the contractor to say, can, can you explain this? And they came back and explained it. And the warranty is the warranty, it's the same warranty as we're going to be getting from Precision. The only major difference in this proposal, again, is back to the, to the block work that's going around the building. One is doing it and one isn't doing it.
The warranty is the warranty.
Yeah, warranty is a warranty. What are you, oh...
All right.
They both have warranties, they're exactly the same, they're both covered by the manufacturer and for labor and parts and, and materials.
The warranty that was submitted from ABC didn't exist. They were not licensed.
Well, then you didn't...
And they were not certified. Now, we get the warranty with another company name on it.
Okay. And they're on the hook, just like Precision would be on the hook.
We're not a contractor by company.
Yeah, well, they're the GC, whoever they bring aboard to do it, it's on them. I'm not chasing the subcontractor, I'm going after his throat.
And Donna, if you want to be comfortable about this, maybe what this whole we can do, because ABC had a payment schedule, and maybe Tom could call tomorrow and say, we're not giving you final payment until we have the warranty signed by the manufacturer. I'm not sure if it's GSA or Firestone, I don't remember.
It's the, it's Firestone material, but there was a merger, and the name of the...
Elevate.
Elevate is the, Elevate is the product. The company changed names in the midst, but they're, the product they tell us is Elevate.
Okay.
So...
So, what you can do if you want, if only you kind of feel comfortable, is before we give the final payment, we want the warranty from whatever company name is, Elevate, Firestone, whoever. So, we have that, and they've done their inspections, which I believe will be out there three times, pre, during, and post.
No, you don't.
To do their inspections, we'll get the warranty, and until we get the warranty, yeah, the village won't cut the final check.
What about that middle payment? They're now requesting a major chunk of change halfway through the project.
I mean, if that's up to the board, again, you're dealing with contractors, progress payments are standard practices, my suggestion would be to hold on to the final payment.
All right, I will, I'll reach out to ABC, I'll have that conversation, and just tell them, that's, I'll write it into the contract, and that's how it'll be. If that pleases the board, we can do that.
If something goes wrong with the roof, and we are in contract with ABC, you're comfortable with the fact that another company is... This warranty is not with ABC, they're not licensed or certified with the, with the manufacturer or the warranty company? So, is that okay? Will we be guaranteed to have that warranty in place when this roof leaks?
We're going to get the warranty, that's what we're going to ask for.
Right, if we don't get the, if we don't, we don't get the warranty, we're not giving them the final payment.
Until we have it.
That will give us someone, until we have it, and if we have to say this is part of your guarantee, if we don't have it, well, we're not paying them, here we'll sue them.
Makes the world go around. Steve or Vernon, do you guys have anything to add? Okay. Steve or Jim, anything else on your behalf?
No, I just think the board needs to make a decision on which way they're going, so they get this thing sealed up.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Donna?
No, I just feel like we have a local company with a stellar reputation that was going to cost less money.
Couldn't agree with you more, except for the pieces of work that are not being addressed. Couldn't agree more. I don't know them, I don't know who owns the company. We did our due diligence, but at the end of the day, you know, it'd be like saying my house needs siding, but they changed the windows. I, you know, I need that done too. However, there's additional work that needs to be done around the top of that building, and it's not being addressed.
And the other company would disagree, and there was an explanation...
Well, I understand they disagree, but they're not addressing it.
He was willing to have the conversation, but every email that went out since would...
I read his emails. All it said is they prefer to do it this way. They make, they make no determination, no decision about, of the block itself. And we've been down this, since last week, we've been, like you said, going back and forth between the two vendors, two contractors, tweaking, asking questions, asking more questions, reaching out to the manufacturers. Due diligence has been done. I mean, we, it's not like we're just standing here and just last second, let's, you know, toss a coin here. We've looked at both, but, you know, I'll say it maybe for the hundredth time, that block work is important to the building. So, if there's no other comments on the board, then I will, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. Vernon?
Yes, okay.
No public comment?
Can we, can we read, can you read it?
No.
Who, who, the details?
Well, it's basically Resolution 24-0206 to award the bid regarding the water treatment plant operation building roof project 8653. At this point, it was blank, but bringing it to ABC Roofing not to exceed $157,904.
You know, we should do this resolution on Monday?
No.
Now, we tabled it. We tabled it tonight because we had those questions on warranties and other things.
I think you should put an R P out with the specs you want and put it out there.
We did.
No, you didn't put an R P with specs. What you want in that, in that bid.
Okay.
Put it out there, that's what you should do.
Okay. But as, as you heard...
I heard it all, but you didn't put any specs out, you just...
Well, we did do specs.
No, you didn't do, he said the engineer...
We did specs for the original roof. When we, when we went from a slanted roof, and I'm repeating what Jimmy said, to a flat roof, we, we had...
But now you went back to a flat roof. But the specs, if you want the blocks done, put in the specs, get your bids.
We brought the roofing guys in. You know, if that was the case, then Precision might not even bid on it. They see it, they know it's there. We can't prolong this as we've talked about.
Put it in the R P, what you want, exactly what you want. You want those block sixes, put it in the R P and have the bid for it.
I'd love to at this point, but we don't have the time.
I think we don't.
No.
That's your opinion.
And then my, well, then I'll come to you for a check when we lose, that's right, it's my opinion. And when, if, if God forbid, anything happens to the interior of that building, then maybe I'll come for you for a check. You know, I mean, I get it, I get it, but it's, it's kind of where we are, and it's weather-wise where we are, and we brought back, and it's not like these two vendors didn't have act or, this is their second opinion on what needs to be done, what the roof is turned.
Municipal law, are we required to go for the lowest bid?
No.
No. Why haven't they any processes?
Because it's New York State law, but it's most responsible bidder, however you want to look at it. So, we're looking at it as this block work needs to be completed. I'm not, I'm not saying Precision's a bad company.
I'm not saying one or the other.
And I said that. So, this is not, you know, yes?
Is this based on time, given the time it would take?
Just can you just give your name for the...
My name's Patricia Kuni.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is this based on time? It sounds like Precision, because they don't have to deal with the blocking part, would go faster than ABC?
We keep saying they don't deal with the blocking, they're doing a repair of seven feet of that.
Okay.
They were not disregarding the other repairs to other blocks.
Okay.
You know, and the conversation was, and that was part, part of the frustration, is that nobody said anything to me about wanting to do repair on other block. So, that's why at home, he was making...
It was in all the proposals.
And the pictures, you can see the damage to the building.
And the pictures that were submitted.
You can see some damage to other block, but when he's putting out a bid for the roof and what is pertaining to the roof, structurally, that needed to be done in order to put the roof on properly, that's what was bid on.
Well...
And that's what he wanted to have the conversation with our engineer about. And that's why when the emails went out, and he said, please contact me if you have any questions, it was, nothing was ever asked. So, he reached out.
Say extend it for another two weeks, get the information you need, and make a honest decision.
I'd love to, Vinny, but we don't have the necessary time.
It's got to be done now, I know, it's got to be done now.
Okay. Well, if it was your home and your roof...
Your opinion, sir.
And, and, yeah, I know, everybody has opinions, so it just...
Do it right. If you're going to do it right, do it right.
Yeah.
Get the bid.
All right, so, we have a yes from Vernon, Donna?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
And a yes. And a motion passes 3-1, and I will reach out to...
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
3-1-1.
3-1-1, thank you. With trustee Wolfski absent.
Well, Gregor, was trustee Wolfski unable to attend and not provide a proxy?
She was not, no. Proxies, I don't believe a proxy is...
No.
No.
No, there were proxies.
You can't do a proxy for the...
There's no proxies for this.
No. Okay. So, that motion passes, I'll be in touch with ABC in regards to the payment plan.
Two quick questions?
Yes, sir.
What was Precision's bid number?
Bill Gregor?
Yes.
Okay.
154.
154.5.
Okay, and was the ABC, in the ABC bid, did isolate that, that block work, that separate block?
172-something, 14 was already paid.
No, no, I'm saying, ABC said 157, Precision said 150-something, right?
Well, not 150, it was 172.
72 even.
But we already paid them 14.5.
Because they already ripped the roof off.
Because they started already, so it was 170.
Well, 157 is the remaining portion.
Correct.
And for, to switch to Precision, Precision bid an amount of 155.
154.5.
154.5.
And that included the gutters, which were about $78,000.
So, is the $3,000 difference between what ABC would do to continue and what Precision would come in and do, is that qualified for that block work, or is that block work more than that $3,000 difference?
No, it's included in that cost.
In what, it's included in ABC?
In ABC's cost, it's included in that.
But you don't know the, we don't know the amount of that ABC attributed to that portion of the work? We just have a...
Yeah, so just clarify, my ABC cost was the 172, what, whatever we paid of the 14,000.
Okay, but we can't compare.
The 172 was complete.
It's hard to compare because originally, like Jimmy, our engineer stated, there were architectural renderings, that went out for bid, but since then, a company was hired, the roof was ripped, and now there are some other issues, many other issues, structural issues and such. So, now that went back out for bid, but without an update to the, that's what my request was, we didn't update those architectural renderings. So, now the bids that's coming in is one company saying this is what we need to do to get our roof in place, another company's saying what they think needs to be done to get that roof in place, and it's not comparing apples to apples. The materials are not comparable, one is, you know, it went from a torch down to a pole install, back to a, I don't even know where we're at anymore, by the way, Jimmy. Is it, where are we at? Is this a pole install or is it a torch downer?
I don't look at it, I don't get it.
Yeah, I think we're back to a rubber roof with a torch.
Yeah, we are.
It was always...
That's a problem.
No, no, because at one point...
It's both, they're both Firestone.
Yes, but we're talking about the difference between a rubber, rubber roof and asphalt.
Asphalt is going to be on top of the rubber.
So, one additional question, we have to, maybe try and make a more logical. Are you saying, if I understood correctly, ABC is not certified by the manufacturer to do this installation, to guarantee the installation with a third party that's going to provide the...
Their subcontractor has the license for, and the license...
One is, you know, it went from a torch down to a pole install back to a, I don't even know where we're at anymore. By the way, Jimmy, is it, where are we at? Is this a pole install or is it a torch downer?
I have to look at it again.
Yeah, I think we're back to a rubber roof with a torch.
Yeah, we are.
That's a problem.
No, no, because at one point.
It's both, they're both Firestone.
Yes, but we're talking about the difference between a rubber, rubber roof and asphalt.
Asphalt is going to be on top of the rubber.
So one, one additional question. We have to try and make a way of that stuff. Are you saying, if I understood correctly, ABC is not certified by the manufacturer to do the installation, to guarantee the installation with a third party that's going to provide the.
Their subcontractor has the license for, and the license with this manufacturer to get the warranty.
Okay, so the installer has the license.
Correct.
So it's a vision.
Correct.
Just for the honorable board's awareness, I have to leave for another eight minutes.
Okay. I think we'll be. Thanks, Paul. Yes, Paul.
You've already approved the resolution to pay ABC forty-two thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars on October seventh. So you, you have to kill that resolution?
They deducted that from.
That was a resolution to have ABC do the roof at forty-two thousand. That was with the warranty.
Do we need to rescind that resolution?
Do you need to rescind that resolution for October seventh?
Proposal of forty-two. Because once it was peeled, then we ended up where we are today.
They've already done some work under their resolution, right?
Correct.
And then, does the current resolution cover the work they previously did?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, then I'd rescind it.
I'm sorry?
I'd rescind it.
Okay. I don't have any, can I just make a resolution because I don't have any?
It's oral resolution.
Sorry?
Twenty-four, there's zero-one-four-six.
Yeah, I mean, I got the.
One-four-six, thanks.
Yeah, four-six.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, so Resolution twenty-four-one-four-six is to rescind the original bid number for ABC Roofing for the replacement of the flat roof. Have a motion? Second? One in favor? All right.
I'll post.
Either way? Yes, no, maybe so?
I'll just abstain.
Abstain. Three-zero-two.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All right.
George May, I want to feel glad. Mr. Mayor, you can write that request for the guarantee into the contract?
It's in the contract.
It's in it? Because then, then why is he saying that we're going to pay the first two and hold off on the third?
You're talking about the payment plan. I'm going to call, that, yes, I would write that into the contract that we're going to hold final payment. And even potentially, I'll even go as far as holding all payments until we have the warranty in place, even though Jimmy explains there are.
The manufacturer one shouldn't take until it's.
There are partial payments up until the final, which is the bulk of the whole project at the end of the day. We, we would hold that.
Okay.
Yeah. And I have an order on that, thank you. With no other business, can I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second? One in favor? All right. Motion passes four-zero-one. Thank, thanks very much, Jim. Appreciate your time.
Okay, I can figure this.
Bye-bye.